All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call the regular meeting to order and announce that the board did meet in closed session and took action. Laura Ricks was appointed teacher in charge for Casumna Oaks High School. Lori Weiss was appointed teacher in charge for Pleasant Grove High School. And during the closed session, the board took action to approve the employment as an associate superintendent of human resources contingent upon approval by the Board of Employment Contract at the next regular school board meeting. The vote was unanimous. All right, had to get that exactly. I'd also like to announce that tonight's meeting is being video recorded and will be available on the district's YouTube channel. And announce that there are cards available at the table just outside of the board room, anyone who wishes to address the board. If you do wish to address the board, please complete a card and hand it to the staff member to the right of my side. Please be sure to complete the card indicating whether the matter you wish to address is on the agenda or not on the agenda. If the matter is on the agenda, we will assume you wish to speak when the item comes up and will hold your card for that time. At this time, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Fortina, who will give you some great information on our parent volunteer being recognized this evening for our pledge of allegiance.
Good, thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. and Mrs. Beveridge to come up with their children. And also, we have Principal Patty Heck and Assistant Principal Jennifer Eubanks, you come up also? Thank you. Adreus Beveridge is one of our great parents at Sierra Enterprise Elementary School. He is father to Adreus Elias Beveridge and Simone King Beveridge. Adreus Elias is a student in Mrs. Garza's Head Start preschool classroom. Mr. Beveridge has been a parent at Sierra Enterprise for one year, but during this short time, he has assisted and supported his son's classroom by getting the yard ready to play, helping with warm-up activities, and setting up for breakfast. He helps to make sure the bikes are ready for play and students have everything they need for their physical activity time. He has set a great example to his son and family that education is a family priority. By coming and helping in the classroom, his children see that the school and their education is important to their father. By volunteering in the classroom, he has set the tone for his children that education is to be taken seriously. Mr. Beveridge enjoys playing baseball and going to the park. He loves to play with Play-Doh with his children. He loves coaching baseball. He also enjoys soccer, basketball, and golf. Most of all, he loves playing and interacting with his children. His children are his greatest joy. Sierra Enterprise Elementary School would like to thank Mr. Beveridge for everything he has done to support his child and the children of our community. He truly shines at Sierra as a Sierra parent volunteer. Thank you, Mr. Beveridge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, we have our high school student representatives. First up, Elk Grove High School.
Oh, mother, I'm Doreen Hurd.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hein. My name is McKenna Engelbrecht, and I am your senior school board representative.
And I'm Melissa Rodriguez, and I am your junior school board representative. The class of 2016 had their special night at junior prom held on March 7th at the Library Galleria with the theme Vintage Carnival. The students looked absolutely stunning and had a great time on the dance floor celebrating the year as juniors. It was definitely a night to remember, and we can't wait for senior ball next year.
On April 11th, the herd was able to go and support the Walk to Remember, which honors the sacrifices Elk Grove alumni Sergeant First Class Brian E. Hall and others made for our country. Wearing our Herd for Hall shirts, members of the community and the herd were able to walk in unison and remember the great sacrifices made by those who protect our freedoms. April 18th was our senior ball held at the Sacramento Grand Ballroom. The night was truly amazing with a beautiful venue, awesome music, and all the seniors enjoying our last high school dance together.
Unity Heard went above and beyond this year with our annual multicultural assembly held with performances by people of many different backgrounds who shared their heritage with the entire campus. There were performances from Japanese club, theater, Persian dancers, rhythmical madness, Tahitian dancers, Native American singers, and inspirational poetry from students on campus. It was a blast, and the entire campus loved the opportunity to experience so many different cultures on our campus. This past month, the EGHS band had the opportunity to perform at Carnegie Hall in New York City. They had an outstanding show performing with many schools across the nation. They all returned back to school with amazing experiences to share with the campus. Elk Grove's Guitar Club presented their recital called Rock Out Loud, where they filled the theater with pumping music and gave us a show to remember.
Our Friend to Friend Club has had multiple meetings this semester, designed their own T-shirt, and has been doing so well that we've been able to add even more friends to our club. We recently had a fun-filled lunch out at the AgBarnes, complete with barbecue and field games. Our club Friend to Friend has been very successful this year, and we look forward to seeing it continue to grow in the years to come. Our Technology and Digital Arts Academy has been very busy. They put on Art in Action showcasing different elements of art to hundreds of elementary school kids throughout the district. TDA sophomores had the opportunity to visit Chico State. The TDA council members also had the opportunity to host the eighth graders entering the program next year and show them our school, their future classroom, and what TDA is all about. We look forward to having more students enter TDA and enjoy all the creativity the herd has to offer. This past week, we were able to have Ms. Aigra, a Holocaust survivor, speak to students on our campus. It was truly amazing to hear her speak and learn from her firsthand experiences. We truly feel privileged to have had the honor to host her on our campus. Our swim team has been doing great this season. Swim just finished champs this weekend, and we look forward to supporting them and cheering them on at the San Joaquin sections from May 14th through 16th.
The women's varsity soccer team is pumped up for the playoff season. They are currently fourth in the league and are going strong playing with herd pride. The EGHS men's volleyball team is having a really great season. For the past three years, over 40 guys have been trying out, and the coaches are excited about the growing interest in the team. This season is their first playoff appearance, and they are exploring the possibility of a JV squad being reinstated to our team to increase the opportunity for more young men to join this sport. Elk Grove's baseball team is doing amazing. We've been ranked number one most of the season by the Sacramento Bee, and we will be battling for first in the Delta League Championships. We even have a player, Nick Madrigal, who is potential for the MLB amateur draft. Great job, team. Our track team has athletes invited to this year's Sacramento Meet of Champions on the top track and field meets in California. Our girls are Haley Gregor, Isabella Dobson. Our boys are A.J. Summers, Aiden Tank, Jacob Cornillo. With the girls, four-by-100 relay team made up of Monica Myers, Haley Gregor, Ariana Daniel, and Portia Williams are again expected to make a strong showing.
Elk Grove High is back again with another blood drive coming up on May 13th. With the help of Blood Source, our campus is super excited to give back to the community and make a difference in the lives of others. AP students and our dedicated teachers have been diligently preparing for the AP exams that began this week. We are so proud of everybody's hard work, so now let your herd pride shine. The Ag program is in full county fair mode with dozens of students preparing to show off the best, show the best of what grows. Students have systematically nurtured seedlings to steer in preparation for this culminating event of the year.
Our seniors have a full calendar of senior events and outgoing to celebrate their achievements. A special one for us is the annual blacklight rally. This is our final school-wide goodbye to the seniors, which will be held on May 22nd. We'd like to invite all members of the board to attend it and see our various groups deliver a memorable performance under the black lights. Thank you very much. That concludes our board report. McKenna and I would like to thank everyone for their support. And next year, I will be moving on to class council instead of returning to ASB, but I have had a great time being the junior school board representative and really have appreciated the opportunity given to me.
And I will be graduating and attending Casumna River College in the fall. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you for the past two years. It was truly an amazing experience and learning opportunity, and I've grown tremendously.
Thank you for that great report. Next up, we have Florin High School.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hein. My name is Kirsty Van, and I am this year's ASB president at Florin High School.
Good evening, my name is Mari Cruz Yagut, and I am this year's ASB vice president. On April 17th, we celebrated Florin High School's diversity with our annual and much anticipated kaleidoscope assembly. This assembly is symbolic of the many cultures at Florin High School coming together, just like the many colorful shapes come together in the kaleidoscope to form a beautiful image. We had an amazing cultural performances by our Latino success club, Masterpiece, Ojana Club, and Mom Club, which students loved and enthusiastically cheered for at the end.
Florin High commemorated its 25th open house this past month, and it was a success. There was more guests than usual, and most importantly, people were enjoying the Dr. Seuss-themed activities we had laid out. This year's open house was different because instead of sticking with the tradition of just having parents and guardians visit their students' classes, we had each department participate in the organizing activities. Not only were we able to create new memories, we also started a new tradition.
We recently held our last awards night ceremony of the year in which we recognized Florin High students for their achievements and also recognized Florin High seniors who were awarded department awards, Seaman's scholarships, and Golden State Seal Merit Diploma awards, just to name a few. The night also included door prizes and desserts, which everyone enjoyed. Of course, we couldn't let our seniors graduate and attend college without first recognizing them for being accepted into their desired college. And in honor of National College Signing Day, we held an event where Florin High seniors got to enjoy breakfast, sign a certificate of the college they were going to, while getting their picture taken, and take a picture with a backdrop composed of colleges that Florin High seniors will be attending.
The junior and senior class came together one last time and had an enchanting evening at gala. Everyone looked absolutely stunning, and it was most certainly a night to remember. We definitely, as teens would like to say, turned up. In addition to gala, seniors are having a few more events before the school year ends. Seniors are having a social on the senior lawn where Texas barbecue will be served, a goodbye rally with games, and a slideshow of pictures of our high school experience will be showcased, a blacklight goodbye luau dance on May 18th, and enjoying our last sunset as seniors on May 20th. Seniors hope to laugh their butts off and enjoy each other's company one last time during these last events.
And of course, a shout-out to our awesome theater company for showcasing their awesome rendition of Good Breakfast Club. Our actors did an amazing job depicting the stereotypes of the athlete, brain, criminal, basket case, and princess. Not only did this play enjoy a full house on several locations, but many also consider it to be the best play Florin has ever had.
I can't believe my journey here is coming to an end, and I can say the same for my friend Mari Cruz. It was a pleasure speaking here and being able to share all of Florin's wonderful achievements. Thank you for always supporting Florin and making it the best high school experience we could have ever had. We are excited to see you at graduation on May 26th, but until then, it is a see-you-later and not a goodbye. And as always, don't forget that you know, and I know, that once a panther, always a panther.
I'd like to recognize our great principals from both of our schools. We have Kathy Guy, principal at Elk Grove High School, and Don Ross, back over there. And Don Ross, principal at Florin High School. Nice job, everyone. All right, students, you may be dismissed. Thank you so much. And next up, we have the academic recognition of spring student athletes and coaches. And I'd like to call on Rod Edmundston to assist, and colleague Mr. Chet Madison will present as well. Thank you.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the school board, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Hein. Elk Grove Unified School District is known for excellence in athletics. It would be my pleasure to come back here in the weeks and months to come and recognize our section, Northern California, and even state champions. But this evening, I am honored to bring you a different sort of champion. These teams exemplify what being student athletes is all about. Excellence not only in their athletic activity, but also in the classroom. The following teams had the highest grade point average at their school for this spring. As a longtime classroom teacher and coach, I can attest to the dedication and commitment displayed by each of these fine student athletes. With that, I would like to introduce the coaches and captains of our GPA champions. Casumna Oaks High School, Varsity Swim, Team GPA 3.808. Coach Sarah Vaughn, captains Kalen Johnson and Matthew Wimberly. Elk Grove High School, Track and Field, Team GPA 3.6. Coach Tom Rosso, captains Isabella Dobson and Isabella Marini. Florin High School, Men's Tennis, Team GA 3.5. Coach Steve Torres, captains Cody Dong and Pierre Lee. The team could not be here tonight. Some of our teams are competing, so accepting for Florin High School will be Principal Franklin High School, Men's Tennis, Team GPA 4.05. Coach Chuck McClellan, captains Aaron Mendoza and Kyle Lopez. And Laguna Creek High School, Men's Tennis, Team GPA 3.91.
Parents, you may come forward and take photos.
Monterey Trail High School, Women's Swim, Team GPA 3.78. Coach Hillary Hong, captains Lauren Ha and Mia Jackson. Pleasant Grove High School, Men's Tennis, Team GPA 3.55. Coach John Vigil, captains Anthony Achelono and Trevor McBroom. Coach could not be here tonight, so also accepting the awards would be Principal Hank Sheldon High School, Men's Tennis, Team GPA 4.02. Coach Luis Lopez, captains Corey Lang and Sue Young. And they could not be here, they're also competing tonight, so accepting for Sheldon High School is Vice Principal Heather King. Valley High School, Varsity Swim, Team GPA 3.36. Thank you.
Can, there are some parents who actually still would like to take some photos, so if you can maybe return for another minute? Sorry. If that's possible. I saw some parents flag me, so. Yes?
Okay, the last group, we need you back up on stage, please.
Thank you. Parents, please come forward and you can take your photos. All right, did we get them? We're good? All right, thank you. Thank you for your patience. All right, next up, we have our 2015 NorCal Science Olympiad State Competition Student and Teacher Coach Recognitions. Mr. Tony Lamoche, and assisting will be Carmine Fortina.
Thank you. Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Hein. I have the pleasure, and you've given us the pleasure to recognize and congratulate students for their performance in the 2015 NorCal Science Olympiad State Competition. On Saturday, April 18th, Science Olympiad teams from Sheldon and Pleasant Grove High Schools competed against 28 other qualifying high schools at the NorCal State Finals in Turlock. After competing in 23 different events, the Sheldon High School Science Olympiad team finished in fifth place. Pleasant Grove High School placed 11th. Events in the Science Olympiad have been designed to recognize the wide variety of skills that students possess. While some events require knowledge of scientific facts and concepts, others rely on science process, skills, or applications. This ensures that everyone can participate, including students from technology classes or advanced science classes. The board is asked to recognize and commend Sheldon and Pleasant Grove High School students and teachers for their outstanding performance. I first get the pleasure of honoring the Pleasant Grove High School 11th place team. I'm going to start out by their coach, Mr. John Weiner. Students Kristi Shu, Julia Getz. Both of those were third-place finishers in the Write It, Do It category. Next, I'd like to introduce Monica Sideros and Trevor McBroom. They both received fourth-place finish in the Experimental Design category. Next, I have the pleasure to introduce Hibo Fan. She received the third place for Compound Machines. Other members of the Pleasant Grove High School team, DeBansh Udas, Benjamin Chan, Emily Lay, Miguel Macias, Timmy Nguyen, and Alan Texon. Next, I have the pleasure of introducing the fifth-place team, Sheldon High School. First, I'm going to announce their coaches, Ms. Kelly Cosney and Jonathan Sample. And now for the students, David Nguyen. Oh, I apologize, timeout.
Parents, feel free to come down and take photos. Saves time. Congratulations, thank you.
David Nguyen. Brandon Trong. David and Brandon received first place in the Protein Modeling category. And also David Nguyen received fourth place in the Anatomy and Physiology category. Jasdeep Sullen. Amanda Nguyen. Jasdeep and Amanda received fourth place in the Bungee Drop category.
Great job again.
Cindy Trong. Cindy placed fourth place in the Entomology category. Also, important to announce, Jasdeep Sullen and David Nguyen received fourth place in the Compound Machine category.
All right.
John Baragon. John and Jasdeep received fifth place in the Mission Possible category. Other members of the Sheldon team. Zachary Cottle. Cameron Bouzot. Justin Craig. Noah Trejo. Abigail McInnes. Representing Pleasant Grove High School tonight is their Principal, Mr. Hank Meyer. And representing Sheldon High School is Vice Principal Heather King. Thank you for honoring these students.
Nice job. All right, parents, come on down. All right, how about another round of applause? Nice job, everyone. Okay. Next up, we have student expulsion. I'd like to ask if anyone wishes to address the Board in closed session regarding a student expulsion recommendation. Seeing and hearing none, I would like to call for a motion to approve the request for student expulsions.
I'll move it.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? All right, very good. All right, LCAP, Local Control Accountability Plan, Mr. Sarudi.
Thank you, President Singh Allen, members of the Board. Superintendent Hoffman, who's out shaking hands. And Ms. Hein. I appreciate and always appreciate the opportunity to come and share LCAP information and progress with you, and progress continues. Brief update for the Board this evening, and we always start our work with E4, and just all of our energy is centering around that center learning vision of every student, learning in every classroom and every subject every day, with the ultimate outcome of having our kids college and career-ready upon graduation. Our four strategic goals, focusing around high-quality classroom instruction and curriculum, our assessment of students and assessment of programs, wellness to ensure that our kids are physically and emotionally safe, and of course, looking at our high interest in parent-family and community partnerships. So just a bit of refresh about the work that you of a Board have been doing over the past busy month of April. We had Board meetings and workshops, and most recently, Board took action to approve a number of budget priorities, about 20 of which, and I could be off by a few, are applicable under supplemental and concentration funds, so our Board took very specific action in terms of directions for next year. And so now we're busy and actually have been writing the LCAP, and I'll just provide the Board and our community a bit of information around that. The LCAP has three sections, and I probably should have put numbers instead of bullet points, but there are three sections to it. The first section is looking at stakeholder engagement. The second section has two components to it, and they actually go in reverse order. It would seem that what you would have is the three-year plan, or I'm sorry, it seems as if you would, the way when you were driving a staple through it, that you would have the annual update, meaning, how did we go over the course, looking at the data from the previous year? And then the next three-year plan. It doesn't go in that order. So there's a three-year plan, and then an annual update, in terms of Section 2, and then Section 3 is more a budget explanation of our use of supplemental and concentration grant funds and our look at proportionality. And so, some of the key next steps. We have a stakeholder feedback meeting on May 14th, and that's crucial. That's taking place here from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Anyone is welcome, but the specific groups that are invited to that are our two state-identified groups. Our District English Learner Advisory Committee and our District Categorical Advisory Committee. Those are the two groups we have. There's a public hearing then on June 9th, and the Board of Education will approve. The public hearing is to bring it for open comment, and then Board approval on June 23rd, so that we can submit it by June 30th. And of course, there are things that will be taking place in between. I just wanted to put a couple of the key points. On the 15th, Superintendent Hoffman has a great deal of interest, and we have, as a district, have been doing it for a couple of years now, in ensuring that we've been engaging our stakeholders all along in the process. And so, one of the things we'll be doing on May 15th, we'll post the LCAP online, the draft LCAP online. And then, there'll be directions in terms of how the public can access that and ask questions, because at that stakeholder feedback meeting, that's when we take questions. It's not so much a live question-and-answer session. I'll do a presentation of providing some feedback, and then general themes that are emerging through the LCAP. We won't go through page by page of the LCAP. And in fact, last year, for Board members who were with us last year, about a year ago, this is the equivalent of the meeting that took place over at Monterey Trail High School, where we had representatives over at Monterey Trail High School. We're doing that here this year. And we'll be taking those questions, and those are the questions that the superintendent or the superintendent's office, his designees, will be responding to in writing. And under the direction of Superintendent Hoffman, we're actually expanding it beyond. When it's posted, there'll be about a week and a half that people online will be able to actually provide and ask questions. So we're expanding it beyond the requirement of the state. So those are some of the key next steps. On the 14th, that meeting is here. The 15th is not a meeting. On the 15th, the LCAP will be posted. That meeting on May 14th is here, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the boardroom. And so I was just going to take a few slides, just so that folks can take a look in terms of the areas of the LCAP. So the Stakeholder Engagement template, this is actually what we're in the process right now. I had a conversation as recently as yesterday with Sue Stickell, the Deputy Superintendent of the Sacramento County Office of Ed. And we're sending our LCAP back and forth with them as they review it. And so it really does make it so that at the point in time when we're bringing it to the Board, you folks will have been able to see it, ask questions, will have responded to folks. And so, I don't want to say it's just a matter of formality once we get it to them, but Rich and his office have been having conversations with the budget folks from the county. So we'll pretty much have it all lined up once we submit it prior to July 1st, so we know that it should be in very good shape. This is where we do talk about the involvement process. What the public will see here is literally the listing of many, many meetings that we've had, and what's been done over the course of the year, and then the impact on the LCAP. Some of the 12 themes that have emerged, as well as the opportunities that we've taken to look at specific data with our interest groups. And then, the other portion of this, on the annual update, in terms of its impact on the LCAP, is looking at what's worked and where have our successes been, and where are areas that we are going to continue to focus. So what this is really doing is this is starting to lay out, it's kind of a preface to what you're going to be able to see in terms of the LCAP. What they're looking for is how did you engage your stakeholders, and did their feedback impact decisions that we've made in terms of programs, services, and expenditures? This one, and I realize the small print is difficult for folks out in the audience, but this is the three-year plan. So what this includes is there are four strategic goals, and so each of our strategic goals will have a page, or actually it may extend to several pages, that will identify specific actions and expenditures. So if you think, it's saying, here's our goal, here's what we're doing, here's what we're, the targeted, or what this service is intended to do, so it's a brief description. It identifies which specific students it's targeting. Is it for all students? Is it for the low-income foster youth or EL students or other subgroups? And then you identify them. Is it specific to given schools? Or is it district-wide? And then what's the budget for it? So that's, and then what happens is you'll have those for year one, that for year two, and that for year three, and so you'll see it, and that's the way it's structured. So this is actually the questions that were, that you can attach to this, or the information that they're asking is virtually the same as it was last year, but this is a changed template and a changed format. And I do believe, I wish I could say that it's turned an 80-page document into a 20-page, more readable document for the public, but in fact, I think it's turned an 80-page document into a 120-page document. There's a lot of, there's a lot of information, but I do believe that when you read through it, it is structured in a way that you can look through it and see goal one, year one, year two, year three, goal two, year one, two, and three. So that's the work that's taking place now, and in fact, the actions that the Board took, those items that were, will be funded with supplemental and concentration funds, those specific items are actually being built in and are built into the LCAP. The annual update, and again, I realize it's small print, but the easiest way to think of this is this contains the information from the prior year. So everything that was in our last year's LCAP is going to be included here, because there may be things in our three-year plan that are not in this year's plan. Some of those things, for example, we included things that were base-funded, and we're looking at probably pulling those out, just because part of the LCAP is it is not a line-by-line budget expenditure report. That's not what it is. It's to tell a story. And so, as we're doing this, we're learning ourselves, and Mr. Hoffman and the Cabinet were asking ourselves, do we need this piece, for example, of title funding to tell the story? And in some cases, we have included some things that are base-funding, but in many cases, we pulled things out. But the piece of this that is different is this is asking, you said you were going to do this, and you said you were going to spend this, you actually did this, and you actually spent this. That's what this table does. And then that last portion here, and I realize you as a Board can't see, but it's this bottom, or bottom row, right down at the bottom, that is saying, based on this, are you doing anything differently? It could be, we're not going to do that anymore. It could be, we've decided to increase it, or we've decided to decrease it. But that's what this is doing. This is laying out, how did we do this year in terms of programs, services, and expenditures? Okay? And then the last piece, this is one that kind of lives more in the world of Rich and Shannon, but really this, that's not what I wanted to do. This portion up here, you can hardly see it. In fact, people out in the audience, and your eyes are better than mine, you can see it. That's a dollar sign, so the easiest way to do that, and then I'll look, and Rich, you rein me in, or Shannon, if I get anything incorrect, thank you for waving, Shannon, is that's actually basically stating, so how much do we have? And it's based on the formula for our low-income foster youth and EL students. And this, what that is, is that's a percentage. So what that's getting at is it's indicating, and our riches department determines that formulaically in terms of the information that the state has, how much money we have in supplemental slash concentration. And it's probably best that we don't view those as two separate distinct entities, because they are not. It's a single amount that we have. The percentage indicates, what is the percentage increase that we have to have in terms of the unduplicated counts? But the other piece is, we have an explanation of how our service is either quantitatively or qualitatively increasing that level of percent increase. So actually, when you think about it, I don't want to say it's tricky, but the qualitative piece is an interesting one, because you could imagine if what we did is we increased, if something actually increased, but what we aren't going to be referencing is an increase in dollar amounts, we're going to be talking about we are better by a certain percentage. It's an interesting thing for us to consider. For the most part, what we are doing currently is we're pretty much looking at this in a quantitative measure and saying, in these areas, we have increased by percentage X, and it's consistent with the formula that we have. Did I get anything wrong, you guys? Okay? And, and that's it. Any questions or comments? I'm happy to try and respond to those.
Thank you, Mr. Sarudi. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Ms. Titus Espinosa?
Mr. Sarudi, did I understand you correctly that once the LCAP draft is posted on May 15th, that people can submit comments electronically via the website?
That's correct.
It's great, great to know that functionality is out there, thank you.
And it expands the opportunity, because by law, there's the two groups that have been designated through the legislative, the language of the law. And Mr. Hoffman certainly has brought a perspective to expand that, and that is what we had started last year as well, and what he wanted to do, and that's why we've been having these conversations. And we actually will be having conversations after the meeting on the 14th. There are some meetings that are taking place with various stakeholder groups, and we'll be doing exactly the same thing. The thing we have to do is actually make sure that we identify this meeting on this date with these folks, and we got these questions, and we're responding to those. And we, once we close it down on the web, that's when we bring literally every question verbatim. If somebody wants to, and we'll structure it so that if people want to speak, they can speak, and we'll take their questions. We will have translators here to assist, and then blue cards, and it's a pretty straightforward conversation, and sometimes folks get up and express opinions and things like that. And it's, last year it went very, very well, and we expect this year to go the same. But we will be allowing folks the opportunity to provide, ask those questions, and just their general comments online.
Great, thank you. Very good.
I just also had two questions. One being, if you're taking the questions into consideration, will there be some type of outline or framework to, as far as the response that's given back? Because as a way to identify and keep track ongoing, so the same question isn't being repetitive.
We do that, so we keep all the questions, and what we do is, is, actually, in some ways, it's similar. When we were gathering the feedback and these 12 areas of interest emerged, the common themes that emerged, it's similar. We will keep every single, so if folks are online, asking questions or making comments, we obviously track those, and every card we get will have. But in Cabinet, what I will do is actually, in my office, I'll take a first blush and then look at themes, and maybe there's a question regarding facilities, and those questions, or those three questions would go to Mr. Pierce. And then what I do is, we bring that into Cabinet so that there's another 15 eyes that do the same thing I do, and I say, I did the first blush, anybody else see any other theme that I missed? And then we respond to those questions accordingly. And last year, actually, and I, I'm going to do this from memory, I'll be within a couple of questions, I believe. Actually, the total number of questions that we received was about 25. So we were actually able to respond literally to every question, and I probably just jinxed myself, because we'll get 1,473 now. But we will do our best to respond to every single one.
Then additionally, I had a second question. I know you had mentioned that you will be looking at the results on the other template, quantitative, percentage-wise, but also, what will you be doing to measure the qualitative factor in that?
Well, when we're, when we're looking at, so for example, if we just think in general. Well, when we're, when we're looking at, so for example, if we just think in general, in previous presentations, there was a time or two, and I believe I sent the board information on all of the metrics that we are looking at. And the majority of those are required coming out of the eight state priorities, graduation rates, suspensions, expulsions, A to G completions, those types of things. And so, those are very quantitative in nature. So, the keys to look at that are when you go back to the DMM process, a decision-making model that we use, because those are what are termed, can be termed, terminal or outcome data points. So, if we're looking and we're wondering, and we're trying to increase A to G completion rates, that isn't the only data we look at. If we say the percentage is X and we want to increase it by Y, then you start looking at input and outputs, and oftentimes, that starts to get at, so what's the type of service that we're providing? What are qualitative measures? How are we supporting the kids? Do our folks in the field need additional resources, training, those types of things? And that's how you get at programmatic improvement. And that's actually, the LCAP has driven, it really hasn't changed anything that Elk Grove has been doing for years in terms of evaluating program, but it has necessitated us to look at programs more deeply and actually more programs in that line.
Thank you.
Mr. Perez.
Regarding those eight outcomes, how are we going to measure those? Are we going to measure those?
The eight state priorities? Well, the eight state priorities are general areas that we have to look at, and within each of those, there are several specific state-mandated metrics. So, many of those, for example, I just signed off on a board communication in your packets this Friday, you're going to get more information from research and evaluation. So, you get that information all the time. Most, if not all, of those data points, there are a few that have subtly changed, but most or all of those, we've been reporting on for years. So, it'll be, it'll be a continuation of that. And then there are some new metrics that we, as a district, will be establishing. So, for example, if we're looking at parent and community engagement, we'll be looking at how we're measuring the effectiveness of our efforts in those, in those areas. And those will be homegrown metrics that we'll establish.
Also, how much we would spend towards those outcomes?
Well, that's all, that's all in the LCAP. That's exactly what's there.
I didn't quite understand what you were saying about, on this last page, use of supplemental concentration grant, that we, there's a dollar amount and a percentage amount, but...
Okay. And so, and I apologize, I closed it out a bit prematurely, or I would put it back, although I don't think anybody can see. It's divided into two sections, and then if you need any further information, Rich and Shannon can certainly provide it. But the top portion of that is literally getting at, the easiest way to think about it is how much. It's literally talking about the amount we get, and that's based on...
District-wide.
District-wide, and that's based on the three student populations of low-income foster youth and EL. The bottom is talking about the percentage increase because last year, 27, Shannon, was the amount, and we spent about 40. In this coming year, it's going to be closer to 40?
Well, we don't have those amounts yet. In fact, until we finish up this year's P2 calculations, which we just got those numbers. So, at first, it's, next year's based on this year, so we have to finalize this year's. So, we don't have those amounts for it. But if you look at last year's Section 3C and 3D of the published LCAP, it'll be very similar information. It talks about how much money we got, proportionality, and those types of things. And it's all just what's required by law, by the statute. So, we'll do a similar thing this year, even though the form's a little different, but that's what we anticipate. We don't have those numbers yet.
Well, you mentioned that of those eight indicators and outcomes, we are doing that, but how much more are we spending beyond what we have done in the past? So, how are you going to reflect that?
It'll be in that section that you're, that you're talking about.
But what percentage are you...
We don't have that information yet.
You don't?
Nope. We have to, it's based on the revenue we receive from the state, tells us how much we have to spend.
For fiscal year 15, 16?
For both.
Okay.
But 15, 16 is built on 14, 15.
Well, I have a snapshot from the Department of Education. They actually give us the actual numbers.
They don't, they don't have our revenue numbers yet.
Right, it has revenue numbers.
But they're, they're not our final revenues numbers that we'd use to do this calculation.
Well, it's a snapshot.
So, we don't, we work with actual numbers, Mr. Perez.
So, Mr. Perez, if you have information to share with staff, I would encourage you to meet with them and share your reports or data.
Okay, I'll do that. Okay. Like I said, I went to Department of Education, looked at 13, 14 fiscal year, 14, 15, and they actually have a snapshot, and I printed it out.
But it's a point in time, but it's not the final information, Mr. Perez.
Right, exactly.
So, we don't work on preliminary stuff. We submit it when we have the snapshots, and then when the next updates do, which will be the LCAP for this year, we'll update all that information for both this year and next year.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions? Mr. Madison?
Yeah, I really don't have a long question. Just on your template, on the goals, action, expenditures, and the progress indicators, will this also be broken down by schools or instead of just district-wide or...
Good question. And so, it, that's exactly what we do. So, if you're looking at a specific action or service, one of the things we have to talk about is, is that district-wide, and if so, that's for all schools. And if it's specific to schools, then we can get as specific as we want. So, we could identify those specific schools and things of that nature. But really, that whole section, when you're talking about services and expenditures, it's district-wide or site-based, site-specific, and then it gets at targeting specific students. Is it for all students or is it for specific students? So, you do it both. You do it in terms of district-wide, school-based, all students in those schools, specific students in those schools. So, you really fine-tune where that money is going. That's what that's designed to do.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'm not...
Sorry, Annie. Thank you. We might have just answered this. I don't mean to be repetitive. Will we do each school site, I've read site LCAPs, will they do an analysis as well?
Well, part of, part of the...
Or their analysis is taken into this one, which would be fine, too. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, what the sites will do is the sites, the sites won't literally go through the entire process that we are doing, but what they will do, so they've, they've got a, their annual continuous improvement cycle, for example, will begin next fall. And so, they submit to us their, their plan for the next, for the next year is what they're really looking at, because this is an annual plan, not a three-year plan.
Okay.
And then what they'll be doing is then, what they also look at is, in the fall, they begin that process and really begin to look at the examination of the data.
Their meetings, they evaluate their own data and use that to create their new next year plan.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I don't have any further questions or comments other than, you know, I'm looking forward to reading our story and sharing that with the rest of our surrounding districts. Just attended our CSBA regional meeting, and I'll talk a little bit about that later on. But I know that our area districts are anticipating and looking at our plans as well, and we're definitely one of those model districts that they, that they turn to, so. But, you know, these templates are great. They could be a little intimidating when you first look at it, but I think it captures a lot of great information, and it does tell our story in a very effective way. So, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
All right. We don't have a budget update, so we are on to public comment, and I do have three people who have submitted blue cards. I'd like to call first on Susan Mason. And just as a reminder, we have three minutes. Thank you.
I usually stay in that, so. Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hines. I wanted to come tonight to thank Ms. Penna for her response on behalf of the district on the issue I was talking about last month. I see where the Secretary of State did indicate on February 24th, 2014, that the referendum had failed, but it was challenged and the signatures on the petitions were to be examined. According to Pacific Justice Institute, it is still in litigation. So, you recognize, or she recognized in the letter, that a lawsuit is pending. So, in essence, I believe that the information I gave you last month is not outdated. If the law is in litigation, that includes all of it. So, in her letter, she kind of pulled out Section F. I sent Ms. Penna's letter, response to the attorney group for review. I also showed her letter to a number of parents who have students here in Elk Grove, and they were stunned, and they were mad. So, we'll see what they do with it. But you've hidden the information, the notice in plain sight. It's in the student handbook, parent-student handbook. I applaud your notice that any student may request the use of private or unisex restroom facilities for increased privacy. Most students do have an expectation of privacy when they come to school, as do most adults. And I was just wondering who I contacted to maybe get a copy of the parent-student handbook mailed to me so I can look at it. Would that be... Okay, okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Next, I have David Hill.
I want you to imagine a coach employed by this district in the year 2045, who comes before this body and poses this question. Can you explain why I've not received a raise in over 30 years? I think your successors would be hard-pressed to find an acceptable answer. Unfortunately, and perhaps unbeknownst to you, this scenario is not a hypothetical. The district's records will reveal that the stipend schedule for both athletic and academic coaches has not changed in more than three decades. During those years, the responsibility, liability, and time required to perform those duties has grown considerably. What were largely seasonable, seasonal, 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 excuse me, jobs years ago are now year-round programs. Well, what to do? I have a modest proposal. Let's go back to the year 1985, calculate the salary increases on the salary schedule, add that percentage of increase to the current stipend schedule, and continue the practice moving forward. This does not make the coaches whole, but it would be a small recognition of past neglect. This brings me to my second point, and that is the vast disparity between the resources for academic versus athletic support in general and on the stipend schedule. In reviewing the district's mission statement, projected outcomes, and commitments, there's a common theme, academic support and achievement. This is as it should be. There is, however, a glaring and unmistakable difference between the rhetoric of the mission statement and the current practice. Give you an example. The district has an athletic director. That director has a secretary. Each secondary site has an athletic director. There are no equivalent positions for academic competitions. The ratio of athletic stipends to academic stipends is nine to one. Academic competition stipends at the junior high level, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find one. Surely, you'll hear the argument that far more students participate in athletic competitions than academic competition. But this begs the question, why? If comparable funds were available for academic competitions, perhaps we would have a different result. Athletic competitors have state-of-the-art playing fields, district-provided transportation, and the list goes on and on. In other words, athletic competition is a budget item. The budget for academic competition, save for the cost of stipends, is ad hoc. In recent years, the district has restored freshman athletics, and certainly, that is a good thing. Please note that when the district cut freshman sports and reinstated them, they did so without negotiation. In other words, this is not a contract issue. But what happened to the restoration of the oral language fair at the elementary level? Or the district-sponsored academic Olympics of yesteryear?
His three minutes, sir.
Oh, can I have my time extended for about 15 seconds?
President?
I'll give you 15 seconds to wrap it up.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Surely, we have the student population and the wherewithal to reinstitute and support these competitions or their equivalents. I invite your questions.
Thank you for your comments and suggestions, and we will take those under consideration, but we don't, this is public comment, so it's your opportunity to share, but we don't engage in dialogue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Charlie Chatten. And Mr. Chatten, you also have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this time. There are two topics I want to address with you this evening. The first topic concerns competition and the positive effects they have on our students. I was incredibly lucky to have been a member of four national championship water polo teams. The years I spent in training and practice, as well as the competitions themselves, taught me valuable lessons that have lasted a lifetime. Concepts of hard work, working with different personalities as a team, developing goals, growing through failure, and the confidence of achievement are lessons that have defined my thinking and personality as an adult. And I would add that in many ways, these very same lessons supported me in the classroom for 32 years as a teacher. But sports are by no means the only place to develop the fundamentals of achievement. I would suggest to you that academic competitions are another area where the keys to success can be acquired, whether it's on a mock trial team, in a model United Nations program, a National Science League biology, chemistry, or physics competition, a math Olympics team, a speech or debate team, entering the La Grande Concorde events, or even a chess competition. Students need these extra motivational opportunities. What I'm asking the board to consider tonight is the idea that we should have more of these competitions and events to engage and inspire more of our students to reach the highest levels of achievement. My second topic tonight concerns Egbert, our retirement trust fund. While I'm a co-chair on the board, I am not coming, coming to you tonight in that position or under the direction of the Egbert board. I wish to speak to you as a retiree who was there for the trust's creation and as someone who follows its funding issues closely. The trust was created to protect retirement medical benefits at a time when the district covered 100% of those costs on a pay-as-you-go basis. The bargaining units recognized that this was not sustainable and joined the district in a creation of a labor management trust to pay for these benefits. Each side understood the value and the benefit of this new arrangement and shared the responsibility for its fundings, with employees contributing 50% and the district supplying 50%. Over time, and with the recent lack of appropriate state financial support levels, that partnership has dropped to approximately 80%, coming from the employees, while the district contributes around 20%. By the way, for the year 2014, Egbert paid about $11 million in retiree health coverage. Now, I'm not here tonight to point fingers or to assign blame. Given all the competing demands on a school district's budget in normal times and the increase in requests during tough economic periods, it's not surprising that the percentages of an equal partnership might slip. We could debate the 80/20 number based on the assumptions or language or practice, but my purpose in visiting you tonight is to let you know that what started as an equal partnership in funding has changed, and I feel this development should be at least acknowledged by everyone so we have a clear understanding of where we stand today. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. All right, I have no other blue cards, so I will close public comment and move on to bargaining units and ask if anybody wishes to address the board? Yes?
Tall people came up here. There we go. Good evening, President Singh Allen, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Hine, and all of you lovely board members. I'm Jennifer Ballerini, president of AFSMI, which is American Federation State County Municipal Employees Local 258. And I'm actually happy to come to you today because I want to thank you for including all the bargaining units and those unrepresented as well, their, their leaders, in the California Labor Management Initiative Symposium and the Next Gen Symposium down in San Diego later this week. I really, it's really important to me that we're a part of that, and I, I just really treasure that you included us in that, and it's, makes me feel good. Thank you. The next thing is I also want to thank you for approving the hiring of 20 additional AFSMI workers when you guys voted in the budget on April 22nd, voted in all of those. And I look forward to the continued growth of our membership, and yay, I'm excited. Thank you. And now Nancy is here to speak to you also.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Nancy Clifford with AFSMI. You know, the AFSMI bargaining unit is the most diverse bargaining unit in this district. We represent people at 92 different work sites in practically every single department that exists, in every discipline and trade except for transportation folks, paras, and those people who either have no bargaining rights at all or the psychologists and social work... workers, or teachers. And among them, we represent school security specialists. We still have them, even though the department, the police services, is challenged right now. And a curious thing has begun to happen. Our folks, we have four left, and we got them back as a result, just for a little history, we got them back as a result of a settlement of an unfair labor practice charge that we had filed. But our members have, in that classification, school security specialist two, have begun to be visited by various sergeants from police services and even a couple of school resource officers. And they're telling our members that they're going to be back in police services as of July 1. That was news to us, since we haven't even seen a public discussion of it, but it's obviously a discussion in police services. And so, we, and we know that you won't engage in a colloquy with us, and that's fine, but we can give you the information, and perhaps you can see that it gets investigated. We would like to know what the status of that may or may not be. And the second thing that comes along with it is, I think it was back in February, somebody commissioned the Research and Evaluation Division to do a survey of campus supervisors, school security specialists, and school administrators. And they don't know why they put it out twice, but they did. We've never seen anything that even looks like results of that survey, and we're very interested in seeing what it shows, because, as you know, we have a number of ideas about how to improve the services that our members give and how to improve the services that police services is able to offer. And you're dealing with the budget right now, and as I say, we don't see anything in it, but we do think it's time to have that discussion, so I'm asking that of you tonight, and perhaps somebody will get back to us in a couple of weeks. We'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I am here on behalf of Mary Deutsch, chapter president of CSCA, who couldn't be here tonight, representing the California School Employees Association as the labor relations representative. So we are very concerned about the transfer of our bargaining unit work to another employee group, and I'll share with you a recent conversation that Mary had with the associate superintendent of human resources. I'm going to read it off my email that she sent to me. So on Friday, May 1st, Dr. Kruger called Mary for a meeting. He shared with her that Adult Ed is having a program development change that would involve eliminating one of our CSCA classified positions, the position of a project implementer. And the new person that would be hired would be in EG Teams and be more like a manager. And the reason for the elimination of this position is the new candidate must have a background in accounting and budget skills. And he also shared that the cabinet had already developed the new job description, made the decision, and was moving forward with the change. It was a done deal. And this meeting was just, this meeting between Mary Deutsch and Dr. Kruger was just noticed that the change would begin starting July 1st. It was at that point that Mary shared with Dr. Kruger some of the duties of a project implementer are actually budget-related. And in addition to that, they develop and manage grant-funded and fee-for-service programs, monitor materials and supplies to support programs, assist in developing program budget, monitor expenditures, and complete monthly fiscal claim reports. Project implementers write proposals for the creation and coordination of new and revised grants, contracts, or related projects, and they provide input to administration and work on assigned program needs. They write or manage grants, they read and understand federal and state guidelines, program requirements, and written reports. In fact, these folks are required to have skills in accounting procedures. So when Dr. Kruger said the new person must have a background in accounting, Mary pointed out to him all of these things about a project implementer, in addition to the fact that you have to have a degree in accounting to be a project implementer. So it seemed to catch him by surprise. And when she asked if the new proposed position was labeled in the LCAP, Dr. Kruger said it wasn't. So again, it's just a transfer of our bargaining unit work to a different employee group. And when Mary asked, was this identified job description to include financial increase in wages for the new hire, and was this allowable as the ability to change programs' needs and job description on an existing grant, Dr. Kruger said he wasn't really sure. And he wasn't sure about the financial aspect of what was going to be taking place. She also asked what happens with the other services of the project implementer's jobs, or job, several of which I've already identified, and he didn't know. So she asked if the change was occurring because an employee was retiring. In fact, the employee that is retiring has worked for the district for twenty-four years. And he said it appeared that way, but wasn't really clear what was going on. So more importantly, and most importantly, of their conversation, Mary asked if there was any way to stop it. Again, it was characterized as a done deal, and we feel like some of our jobs are being replaced. We can give you examples of teacher associates and child associates that work still exists but has been replaced by other employee groups. So I'm here to ask on behalf of the members of CSCA, you know, how does the district want to move forward in our labor relations? We feel it's important to get ahead of the game, get the information before these things are implemented, so that we have some input. It's bargainable. You know, now I need to send a demand to bargain notice and put everything on hold until we can have a realistic conversation. We don't necessarily just put up a roadblock to everything, but we need to talk about it before people start taking action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, honey, nobody else here? All right, moving on, there are no reports, so we've got public hearing action items. I'd like to call on Dr. Mindy Gariwal, tentative agreement between Elk Grove Unified School District and Amalgamated Transit Union.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Hein. If the tentative agreement between the Elk Grove School District and ATU is ratified by ATU and the AB 1200 review is approved by the Sacramento County Office of Education, the Board of Education of Elk Grove is asked to conduct a public hearing to present the tentative agreement reached through negotiations on April 20th, 2015. Should there be an affirmative action by ATU, the EGUSD Board President should announce and open the public hearing with a request for anyone who wishes to speak to the proposal to please come forward. After listening to any speakers, the Board President should close the public hearing. After closing the public hearing, the Board should be asked to take action to approve the tentative agreement.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gariwal. At this time, I will call for a public hearing on the tentative agreement between the district and ATU. Seeing and hearing, no comments or requests for comments. I'd like to close the public hearing and call for a motion to approve the agreement.
I move it.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gariwal. All right, I'd like to call on Carl Steinhour on revisions to Board Policy 3531.3, Tobacco-Free Schools, and Item 12, revisions to Board Policy 5131.62, Tobacco.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Hein. Joining me tonight is Tammy Silveira, who is program specialist in Student Support Services and oversees our youth development office. One of the programs under her administration is that of tobacco use prevention education. Sometimes it's known by the acronym TOPI. TOPI is state-funded through a competitive grant process administered by the California Department of Education, and we are proud that for over fifteen years, the district has been awarded this grant and has provided prevention and intervention programs regarding the effects of tobacco use. These services include not only health education, but also direct counseling services to students struggling with tobacco, alcohol, and other drug use and addiction. As part of our current three-year, one-point-seven-million-dollar grant and its mandates, the district is required to examine and update its board policies related to tobacco. In addition, our district is due for the tobacco-free schools recertification by the state in June. And so before you tonight are two related board policies, their revisions, and we're asking for your discussion and comment, and they have been revised to include language regarding electronic cigarettes, vaping devices, and other nicotine products. And we are here to answer questions and take comments regarding these revisions.
Thank you, Mr. Steinhour, and just as a point of clarification, these are consistent with CSBA model policies.
Correct, and they have been vetted through the district, our district's attorney.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, there are no discussion or action items, so we are, rush, we are moving quickly. Might be the shortest meeting yet.
Don't jinx us.
I know, don't jinx us. I'm going to call on board member and superintendent reports. Any board members have a board report? Mr. Fortina?
Yes, I have two. Thank you. First report pertains to the SARB activity. Last week, we met again, and we finalized the proposal that will be coming to the board for discussion. What I'd like to say before he walks out of the room is that, under Carl's leadership, what's going to be coming, what's coming to the board is a collaborative effort. The committee was large, it was broad-based. People had an opportunity to address their concerns regarding current practice, their concerns regarding a new practice. Those concerns were heard. It's a whole lot different to hear than to listen. And Mr. Steinhour heard what people were saying, and those comments were blended with the direction that Support Services was looking at. And what we have is a comprehensive program that's going to be presented that is going to look at positive student attendance, more importantly, look at providing the services necessary to provide intervention to children and families that allow for situations to be overcome, resulting in students attending school. We know that when we talk about achievement gap, one of the biggest issues with respect to achievement gap is attendance. If you don't go to school, you don't learn. If you don't learn, you fall behind. If you fall behind, you drop out. The program that's going to be presented to the board is sustainable from a financial perspective. It addresses all of the issues that are important with respect to consistency of application throughout the school district. It has clarity in terms of approach, and throughout the document, what is really important is it stresses the positive attendance aspect of SARB as opposed to the punitive aspect of SARB. So, great work, it was a super activity, we're done, and can't wait for it to come before the board so we can have discussion. Second item, I'm the board's representative with respect to bylaws on finance and budget. Many months ago, I had requested that the proposed revisions to the budget bylaw that Mr. Fagan and I worked on go before the board's finance committee. First time any board policy has ever gone before the board's finance committee. They have done their work, they have made their recommendations, and that board policy also will be coming to the board for discussion, and it'll be a compilation of both the work that Mr. Fagan and I did, along with the recommendations. It'll be forthcoming from the finance committee. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for that great report, Mr. Fortina. Ms. Martinez-Lary?
I recently attended the CSBA regional meeting over the weekend and learned a lot of information, very informative, I must say. It was nice to also have one of my former faculty members mentor attend the meeting as well. During the time of the meeting, we also discussed the online board agendas, and I spoke with Mr. Hoffman yesterday about some of those issues that were brought up, or concerns regarding the online board agendas. In addition, CSBA will also be having their delegate assembly meeting in the next weekend or so, so I'll be able to attend that as well as a new member and get the training. And additionally, we discussed bullying programs, PBIS. What I learned overall from the meeting, we had some general discussions regarding safety, school site issues, negotiations, things of that sort. However, I learned that Elk Grove Unified seems to be, again, reinforced that, seems to be a modeled district here. Talking with my fellow colleagues of different districts, they're looking for our program in our districts as a model to help lead them in some of their language and also some of their services that they're conducting with their students. So I must say, our district is doing a really great job, the staff and employees, and I just wanted to pass that information along, so thank you.
So I also attended Regional Six Meeting for Delegate Assembly, and it was great to have Dr. Martinez-Lary join, and her mentor that she was referencing is a school board trustee from the Thomas, and so it was great to have them reunited there as well. We did appoint a new chair for our region. It's my friend and mentor from Sac City Unified, Daryl Wu, who is our new chair for our region. And we, you know, one of the great things that we do is we share the stories, like my colleague discussed, of what are all the great things happening in our districts and where can we learn from. So one of the things that we're going to be advocating for is creating a system where we can share these documents online somewhere, and when we have agreements and things like that, so that, you know, if other districts are still in the process, you can get some creative ideas on what other districts have done and maybe factor those in. So, and not only that, but just other programs that we have available, that there are interests in other districts as well, so it's a great way to exchange information. So we're working on that. So I appreciate that Crystal did share some of the issues that Folsom-Curdova has with Agenda Online. So I don't know if Mr. Mate is in Communications, I'm sure he is, and staying on top of that. I know what was very interesting, what was intriguing for the rest of the districts was our comparability study. There's a lot of interest in what that's going to look like, because obviously, it will have an impact on their respective districts as well. So I'm also, obviously, we're all very excited about that, but so is our region, to see what that yields. I think, you know, when we were, when Mr. Sarudi was discussing the LCAP document and how many pages ours is going to look like, that may, it may be intimidating, I think, for some of the other districts. They have scaled it back, but not all districts are the same. We are the largest in Northern California, so obviously, ours is going to be a lot more detailed in what the information that we have. But I do know that some of the other districts are scaling it back. There was a couple that were literally reducing it by half. I don't know how one does that without compromising information, but, you know, less is not always more. Some, you know, we do want the information because it does tell our story, and we have a lot of great stories to share. I think that's it. We have our delegate assembly meeting coming up, I think, the 15th and 16th, so great report on that, and looking forward to attending the summit this weekend with our bargaining units and management team. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Hey, just a quick update. I had the opportunity to make a presentation for the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce last week. They were doing a salute to education, kind of an annual opportunity that they do, and so it was a great opportunity to share progress that we're making. Just about, they fell out of their chairs when I talked about the fifty-plus schools that we have to build moving forward, and also a real focus on the need to hire the best and brightest from across the state, and again, a focus on making sure that our hiring practices attract a diverse employment group that matches the diversity of our community. So, very well-received, and it was a pleasure to do, so thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just wanted to chime in, although I am not our official representative to the CSBA Delegate Assembly. We will have some additional representation there. I'll be doing double duty, working during some of the event and just being an Elk Grove Board Member during the rest of it, so I'll see a couple of you there.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to the consent agenda item, and assisting will be Mr. Fortina.
All right, thank you. Like to move approval of the consent agenda items, beginning with Item 13, approval of minutes, 14, personnel actions, 15, certification of administrators' competence to evaluate, 16, approval of purchase order history, 17, disposal of obsolete surplus property, 18, acceptance of gifts, 19, associated student body scholarship expenditures, Valley High School, 20, ratification of... High School, 20, ratification of contracts, 21, instructional materials adoption, 22, California high school exit exam waiver requests, 23, Edna Beatty Elementary School and bus yard paving, 24, 2015 asbestos abatement at CW Dellet Elementary School, award of contract, 25, 2015 portable relocation at Samuel Kennedy and Mary Sukamoto Elementary Schools, award of contract, 26, central kitchen boiler replacements, award of contract, and that would be it.
All right. It was moved by Mr. Fortina. Do we have a second?
One second.
Second by Mr. Madison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Very good. We are on item number 28. Other items from the floor. I have one item, and it's just, is a reminder that we are up to our end-of-the-year activities, and there's a lot of things for us to attend, and so please, I'm encouraging the board to sign up for those end-of-the-year activities, including the awards assemblies that you can attend, and most importantly, the graduation ceremonies. It's always wonderful that we have had a pretty much 100% turnout at every high school graduation, so hopefully you're able to attend all of those and see all of the great work that we do and see it all culminate with this wonderful graduation ceremony. And it also, just, you know, selfishly, I think, as board members, we are expected to be there, and when we're shaking those hands, if we have the burden to share with the rest of the board by taking turns, it certainly makes a day-long activity go by a lot more smooth. So please, do sign up for those activities and assemblies as you can. So that's all I have. Any other items from the floor? All right, hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting.